Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here. With that, would you please join me in the flag, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now, I'll find it in a moment. I have a proclamation to read. Incidentally, I'll mention that afterwards, but... She is.
I don't think...I don't know what you mean by that. No proclamation?
You don't have a proclamation? Okay, well, that's good.[47.21][47.21](Laughter). But we do have...
Okay, Nancy, take a breath.[53.48][53.48](Laughter).
What we do have is a report from the Friends of the Oregon City Library, and I presume there's a designate that's going to come up and say some good things.
Okay, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Linda Orson, the 2013 Chair of the Friends of the Library. I was also the 2012 Chair. I'm back.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure serving. It's really been a very good time. First of all, I want to start off with saying that I want to thank all of our volunteers for the Friends. They've done just an incredible job in the last year and continue to do wonderful work for our city. And having said that, I'm not even going to go through the report because you already have it in front of you. Couple of the highlights that we did last year was we actually reviewed and revised our bylaws, which was huge, huge. But thank goodness, that's over with, and now we've got some new bylaws to work with. This year, we're going to try and work on putting together a handbook. We have no working information for our volunteers, so that we're going to try and work on that this year. One of the biggest things is last year, Maureen Cole started a newsletter online for the library, and the Friends have been contributing monthly to that newsletter, and it's starting to go out to more and more people. This year, we're also going to be starting a membership drive. In March, we're going to be having membership forms in the utility bills.
Nice.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, so we're going out in earnest. We need more members.
That's another insert in the utility bill that people will throw away?
They better not.[182.62][182.62](Laughter).
Part will, part won't.
It's really pretty. I think people will say, "Oh, this is so pretty, I better read it."[192.01][192.01](Laughter).
Very good.
We're also helping to coordinate with the 100-year anniversary at the Carnegie. As you know, June 22nd is our big birthday. To celebrate that, of course, Maureen has a lot of the big hoop-de-doo stuff for the library. And we are also putting on an art show on the grounds of the library. This is something that kind of goes back quite a few years, when we did our first city arts fair on the grounds of the library, and we're hoping that it turns out quite nice for the one day. Prior to that, in May, we are going to be installing a temporary sculpture garden on the grounds of the Carnegie for three months. Three months, we're going to have some artwork out there, local artists, which I'm quite excited about that. More art in the city, the better. Crossover with my guild, Three Rivers Artists Guild. Also, we have assisted funding for the 2013 Big Read author Cheryl Strayed, who will be here March 14th. You have to get tickets. There are only 100 tickets available. This is one of her very few appearances in Oregon. We are very, very privileged to have her here.
Do you want to say just a little bit more about her?
Cheryl Strayed wrote the book Wild. It was about her adventures on the Pacific Crest Trail. She had never done anything like this before, so it was quite entertaining, but it was also quite introspective into what she was going through in her life at that time. And she was also with the Oprah Winfrey Book Club, one of her top sellers. So we're really excited to have her here. Tomorrow night, we're also having a gentleman who's going to be talking about From Print to Pixels. I forget his name, but he will be talking at...
Mark Cunningham.
Mark Cunningham, thank you. And that will take place at 6:30. Let's see, what else can I talk about? Well, one thing I wanted to mention, because I thought it was quite phenomenal, was last year, I talked about the total volunteer hours for the Friends, all of the Friends groups. This year, the total, or for 2012, the total was 5,130 hours, total volunteer hours. And in the independent sector and Points of Light Institute, the estimate for 2,009 was $20.85. So using those figures for 2,009, our volunteers contributed $106,960.50 of their time for our library. I think that is phenomenal.
It is, totally, yes.
And also, I have included the balance sheet for last year for the library. You can peruse it at your leisure. And also, an invite, or a flyer for the activities with Cheryl Strayed and the bookmark that talks about our big celebration. Any questions?
I think it's great.
It's really, really nice. I have a question.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm looking at this CD cleaner machine. This is maybe a stupid question. What does it do?
It cleans the CDs.[420.44][420.44](Laughter). Have you ever gotten a book on tape and it go, you're getting right down to the juicy part and it goes...
And then it goes, "Yes, yes, I have."
That's what the cleaner does.
But I paid $9 for one, and I'm thinking, you know, what does this do?
Oh, this actually cleans, I guess it does a deep cleaning. I don't know if it's a sonic...
Does it re...
It's probably more about commercial.
Those little things back?
Okay.
It's standard.[448.12][448.12](Laughter).
But apparently, it works.
Good, thank you.
We're reviving a lot of books on tape.
Really? Great.
And DVDs.
Oh, yes. This is a great report. You're up over last year, and you're contributing to the capital building fund.
Yes, yes.
This is great.
Thank you very much.
Good participation in the program.
Thank you, yes. The Friends have done a wonderful job for our library.
They really have, really have. It's nice, thank you.
I'm proud to be one of them.
I made a promise to the Friends group, you may recall, that we would find a site this year.
Yes.
And I think we'll be really encouraged to do so, this being the 100th anniversary of the Carnegie.
That'd be wonderful.
Yes, it would be. And then we get to go back to our studies and what we will do with the Carnegie building after that, if it should be removed. But in any case, I'm going to take this as a, not only a challenge, but a real goal, to get the site identified. I think this would be an auspicious year to do it.
Well, I know it's been a very, very difficult job. We realize that, and we understand that. We really appreciate everything that you're trying to do to try and find the perfect site.
We've got some alternatives we're looking at.
Good, good. Well, perfect, somewhat perfect. It'll be a good home.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good job.
Well, with that, we're going to go into, just a moment, I know what we're going to talk about, but I got to get down there. Into our, first of all, citizen comments. Is there anybody that has anything they wish to speak on? And of course, William Gifford is coming forward.[566.04][566.04](Laughter).
Why, William?
This is to speak on anything that is not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. It's a great blessing of mine to have a lot of friends. I just do have a lot of friends. That's a great blessing, that I was born, raised, and still have a very large family. I have a lot of family members. In 25-plus years of being a business owner, I've had a lot of employees. None of them, not my family, not my friends, not my employees, none of them were perfect. They all did things that they probably shouldn't have. They all made mistakes, like all of us do. But I think that none of us are without error, you know, cast in the first stone and all that, and all that reference. What I'm referring to, not to be continually oblique, but is staff bashing. It's my experience that the staff in Oregon City is, by my standards, some of the best staff in the state. And I'm talking about all the way from the executive staff down to clerks and laborers, every person that I talk to that works for the state reeks of integrity and diligence and professionalism. And frankly, it irritates me when I hear people talk down about staff with allegations of corruption or of pie-in-the-sky dreams that we are, that the staff is forcing the city to fund, and other such comments. And I think some positive things need to be said about our staff, all of them, because I would challenge anyone to look at any other city in Oregon City and tell me about employees as a team that's a better team than what we have. I'm proud of our team, and I think as players, and of course, they're also your employees, but as players on a team, I think we need to pull together. Just because something gets done that we don't agree with or didn't turn out the way that we wanted it to, I don't think that's worth throwing the baby out with the bathwater. And I'm just making a citizen comment about how proud I am of our staff and how they deserve a lot more respect than they get.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
There, you know, I've heard things, seen things written in emails that have been flying back and forth. I do personally believe that the general citizenry recognizes that, in fact, our staff is doing a great job. And in fact, has had state and national awards in many of the departments for their service and for the work they've been able to do. And we've got them sitting around here. In fact, most of the executive staff do attend all our commission meetings, and I really appreciate that. I think before David Fraser was here, that was not the case, but it's, I regard ourselves as a team, and thanks for the comments, I appreciate them. James Nocita and Dan Holiday.
They also attend our neighborhood association meetings and everything else, a lot of public outreach.
Yes.
Good evening, James Nocita, Oregon City. I just wanted to come before the Commission tonight to thank the Commission and staff and whoever and everybody who was responsible for making the tough call to release the LGBTI report on Tuesday. I was one of the citizens who requested it be disclosed at the last commission meeting. And, you know, we should hold leaders and staff accountable when there are things like a lack of transparency, but just similarly, when a tough call is made in the advancement of transparency, all kudos and credits should be accorded similarly. So just speaking for myself, I would like to give the city that thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. And James, that gives me an opportunity to make a comment. When the serious mistakes was made on the discovery of the SDCs and the under collection of them, as soon as it was detected, the person in question immediately informed the supervisor, who immediately informed our city manager, and who immediately then called an executive session together with us all. So as soon as the mistake was discovered, there was upward information that that serious mistake had been made. And I think it may not have been detected for a long time had that not occurred. And so I want to credit those people who made the mistake of coming forward as soon as they discovered it. But I appreciate your comments, I also appreciate those of William. And Dan Holiday?
Actually, I was turning this alarm for 6:00.
Oh, okay, very good. With that, we'll go right on into the report here of the public hearings, where we're talking about the resolutions that are being put forward for a charter for five, being sent to the voters for charter purposes.
We didn't do five.
Five.
Five, I'm sorry. Adoption, oh, excuse me. Is there anything anybody wants pulled from the agenda?
No.
No.
Thank you. And then we'll go into our public hearings, and this has to do with Resolution 1302, Measure Amending Section 38 of the 58 of the City Charter, revising water rates and increased limitation to Oregon's electors. This has been a major discussion, and I presume it's coming back. Is it, John, are you going to be addressing this?
Right, I'll be presenting, although there's not a lot more to present than what's in the City Commission report.
Right.
So there's two resolutions before you. We've been before the City Commission, so thank you for having us yet again. I appreciate that. So on February 6, 2013, the City Commission discussed the adoption of Resolution 1302 that submits a measure amending Section 58 of the Oregon City Charter regarding water rates to the electors of Oregon City. City Commission's direction to staff was to prepare two resolutions for discussion at the February 12 City Commission Work Session. At the Work Session, the City Commission finalized the language for Resolution 13-02 and Resolution 13-03. Resolution and explanatory statements are in your packet, and I, other than that, I understand there's going to be some discussion amongst the City Commission.
I just, we had a discussion, a lot of discussions about what was in there. Did you receive anything else from us that indicated that there had to be changes in anything that was put forward? In other words, do we have any edits in here that weren't at the last meeting?
I've heard of none, no edits.
Do we have any further discussion among the Commissioners?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Commissioner Mom?
Sunday, last Sunday, Commissioner Roth and I, who are chairing this committee to get this passed, met with about 10 citizens from our community, and concerns that were put forward were putting both measures on in May. So I said I would bring these forward. Their concerns are there hasn't been enough outreach about the rate piece. And so everybody in the room was in agreement that they would support the not rolling the rates back and fixing that piece of the charter. So that was the piece. And there are people that were there at this meeting that may want to come forward and speak to that. Our next meeting that we're going to have is on the 10th, I believe. Is that correct? Yes. So we're really looking forward to working with everybody, and I just want to let you know that as far as I'm concerned, whether we put the rate piece on in May or November, it's all about the timing, okay? So I really want to get this water rate setback taken care of. That's the most urgency to me. So I would be okay if we did it in November, in a November election. I know there's been a lot of outreach already. I know, John, that you've done tremendous job of going to all the neighborhoods and CIC and soliciting input, but I just really want to focus, if that's the issue, on the water rate setback. I want them both to pass, because I understand their capital need. I understand the pipes are clogged and, you know, and I know that we have to address that problem, and I understand that. And I would be willing to go back out in November and pound the pavement again if that's the case of what the Commission has decided. Also, from my own standpoint, if this Commission has decided to go forward with the election in May, I would support you 100%, and you would not hear any negative from me in the community, so...
That's what I wanted to understand. You wanted both measures to be in November?
No, no.
You wanted the rollback to be in the May election?
Yes, the water rate setback.
And the 6% then considered for November.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
You're not on, but I think you were next.
Right, and I'm in total agreement with Betty. I think that the reasons brought up at our discussion on Sunday were all very valid, and it's something that we should really consider looking at. That is the most important part right now. And, you know, I do have a question. Someone brought up at that meeting that the rates were raised 62% in 1996, is that right? Over the 94 rate?
I think so.
I believe 62. I want to say 68, but it was a big number.
So if we go back to the 94, that's where we're headed, right? Without stopping the rollback? Is that 62 included in the 27 that we're hearing, or is that in addition?
No.
Well, the rate rollback, I think, that was presented was taking our current rates, rolling them back to the 1994 levels, but including a 3% rate increase over the next, I guess it would be 20 years. So that's how the 27% came about.
Okay, the 27% wasn't 3% times nine years that we increased the rates?
No, it was not.
Okay.
It was the 19, it was the rate that was established, you know, that they were at in 1994 plus 3% for every year thereafter. That got us to where we believe legally we would roll those rates back to.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just in total agreement that we should, at this point, just do the rollback, stop the rollback, and work on stopping the rollback, and give us more time to look at options for the other funding.
Colonel Polly?
Yeah, I feel like we've done a lot of work on this. Like you said, here we are again. And we've looked at different scenarios, and we've had a lot of public outreach for the different scenarios. And there was a consensus that was built through not only the phone surveys, but through other outreach, and through our looking very closely at all the details, that we were going to, we divided it into two separate ones, which I think was very important. That way, if, you know, the increase doesn't pass, we still get the water rate rollback, and also, we can explain the two different issues, because they are two different issues. One is about deferred maintenance, stuff that's been put off year after year, and now is the time for us to set it right. Now is the time for us to be leaders and stand up and get us back on track. It's still going to take 20 years at 6%. But I think all the information's been laid out there. I think that, I read the statement, the explanatory statement, I thought it was very clear. I think this creates clean lines, and I think it satisfies what was originally really stressed in 96, after the rates had been doubled. This puts a cap on it. It puts clear controls for the city to not raise it any more than that cap. And this is what we've been studying, this is what the people said they would support, and this is what I think we should do.
Yeah, I'll take myself to the top of the list here.[1464.44][1464.44](Laughter). I would simply comment that accusations that there wasn't an outreach process, I would say, are unfounded. There's been a major outreach process on the part of Public Works. And there will continue to be an outreach process. I believe the issues, I mean, my concern would be that a decision on an individual's part, they were going to kill the 6%, they would go ahead and kill the rollback. But I think anybody that is actually paying attention are in fact going to distinguish between the two issues and are going to vote accordingly. I guess I look at it a bit differently than, well, not apparently, not than you, but that if in fact we find that either of those measures or both of them fail, we have another opportunity in both cases to address it in November. And we can just simply see how the public felt about those particular issues and how it was presented. Commissioner Smith?
Well, I hope we're going to, I see a list of citizens too, so I'm anxious to hear what they have to say. I could go either way, I think. The important thing is that we get it resolved. And so I think whatever is the best scenario in doing that is what we need to go with. And that's why I want to listen to what the citizens have to say about it. I guess the one concern I would have is that the explanatory statements are very much written, that they are on the ballot together, and so those would have to be rewritten if they were separated. Separated, I mean, from different elections. I could see it both ways, and I'm not sure how the citizens will take it. I think in some ways, it's good to have them joined it together, because they are joined it together, and it makes sense. People will have more of a discussion about how they relate to each other, and that would kind of get the word out a little bit more in terms of public education component. It might, you know, it might be seen to be a little bit more transparent if they were together, but I could also see them being split, which is one of the reasons we split them into individual measures in the first place. So I think whatever seems to be the most, whatever seems to be the more likely scenario of it passing, I think is what we need to do. And I'm hoping that maybe the discussion with the citizens that are about ready to speak might help make that decision. I will say that it seems like this group that met was a contingent of people from multi-sides of the community, and on other issues in the community have been kind of at opposite viewpoints. And to kind of get a consensus with that group on maybe a way to move forward, I think says a lot. And so I'm kind of thinking in that way, too. Whatever we do, we need to make sure that we fix the situation.
I agree.
So...
We'll be ready for a comment from the public then. William Gifford and Dan Holiday, would you come forward, please?
Open the public hearing? Yes, is this a public hearing? Are you going to open the public hearing?
Well, we open to each agenda item. It doesn't matter if it's a public hearing or not. We always open it to discussion, and the whole time I've been mayor.
Who's going first, Hugh?
William.
I signed up first. Well, go ahead, William.
Thanks.
William will go first.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. I was at the meeting. I was very impressed at the leadership that was shown, and the facilities were nice. I was disappointed that there, other than the two Commissioners, there were only seven other people there, two of them being my wife and me. The point of that is that that's a very small sample to be making decisions on such an important issue. I think that we have, with the outreach that's been performed and with the surveys that have been taken, I think that there is a much broader and more reliable sampling that should be considered before just the opinions of nine people. That although they were... were across the spectrum in many areas, I still think it's a small sample. I think it's too small of a sample. The statement was made that everyone at that meeting, all nine of us, were in agreement to eliminate the rollback. I think it was probably true, but I would like to point out that there's a difference between just being in agreement...
Not the rollback, the 6 percent.
Uh-uh. No, he's right. He's right.
No, the agreement was on removing the rollback from the charter.
Oh, right. Okay, okay. I thought you said, okay. All right. I apologize.
It's okay. I'll take some of your time. Although they say that they were in agreement, I don't know that that can directly translate into support of a willingness to do the work that's needed to actually run an effective campaign to do that. So I would like to see a further commitment to work on at least that part of a campaign, other than to say, yeah, okay. I would like to say, right, this is important for our future. I did hear Barbara Rincon say that. I like that phraseology. I think it needs to be a positive campaign. I think it needs to be, this is something that we have to do, and we have to be enthusiastically positive about making it happen, not just saying, yeah, okay. What I, the other important thing that I'm finding is that there is a significant lack of education, despite all of the presentations that have been made, and I think I went to all of them, more than a half a dozen of them anyway. And the problem does seem to boil into two sections. One is the rollback. Part of that problem, however, has not been clearly defined, whether or not that is the rollback, to exactly what point, and how many of those 3 percent years, just the ones that were actually implemented, would be added on. I don't think that you can add more than that, because they weren't rolled back for, what, nine out of those 20 years? So I think that needs to be, yeah, so Mr. Sullivan, I'm sure will address that. Part two of the problem is a little more complicated, but I think where the real lack of education is, is not making it clear about the distinction between the options. It seems there's two options. One is to change the rates. The other is to provide the funding. And we have to remember, the purpose of this whole exercise is to provide sustainable funding for the distribution of our water. This is absolutely critical. We can't live without it. If the two options are raising the rates or going out for a bond issue, to bifurcate this just a little further, the bonds needs to be a more clear definition about the distinction between revenue bonds and geo-bonds. Geo-bonds, I think, have been proven that this is a bad way of doing it, because it's only property taxes, and it's not the water rates.
We'll get some definition on those, too.
Okay. And on the revenue bonds, if that is going to be paid back by rates, by water rates, then you're going to pay it back either by increasing the rates or by paying on a revenue bond. But with a revenue bond, it has two disadvantages. One is that you're paying interest on that bond, which you wouldn't if you just raised the rates. And secondly is that you would get all that money at once. And the difficulty with getting all that money at once, as any businessperson can tell you, you've got that money, you'd better be spending it as soon as you can to get a return on that investment, because otherwise, all you've got is a bunch of money that you're just paying interest on, that you're not getting a return on. And the difficulty with spending all that money all at once, of course, is that the whole bloody city is going to be torn up if you get all that money all at once. So I'm speaking against bonding.
Yeah. And that's how the measure is. That's before us. But I think your point is valid, because the question has been raised, and so...
That rationale needs to be explained, why we are not going for a bond, because the question still keeps coming up. But why don't we just go for a bond? Of course, the bigger question that I can't answer is, why aren't we doing this through...
I let you have part of Dan's time, because he interrupted you.
Let him have all of my comments.
Can I make a comment?
It says zero amended.
Okay, thank you, William. Those were good observations. I really appreciate that. I did kind of get a different opinion about the support. I did feel like they were going to support the measure, but, you know, we'll see. A question came up, and maybe, Mr. Frazier, you could answer that. At this meeting, there are some citizens that are on CRW, but they live in Oregon City. So will they be able to vote on the charter amendment? Because it is a charter amendment, not a water...
Yeah, you don't have to be a water customer to vote on a city charter amendment.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Halliday?
So my name's Dan.
You get your poll three minutes.
My name's Dan Holliday. I live in Oregon City. I'm a former city commissioner, former school board member, former water board member. And I was one of the two chief petitioners for the rollback measure back in 1996, just out of full disclosure. I attended the meeting on Sunday, and I think the key that we have to understand is that we have two problems. One is, you know, the water cliff, if you want to call it. That is, that we have to deal with this issue, you know, quickly, as far as the rollback is concerned. The other one is a long-term lack of maintenance and replacement, that I believe there is still a substantial amount of time to have a discussion about what the proper mechanism is to make that happen. And the group that talked about this, and one of them was a certified smart guy who has been a county administrator in two counties in Oregon, as well as another state, who has gone through all this stuff. So, you know, this is a guy who really actually knows what he's talking about.
And sits on the Transportation Advisory Committee for Oregon City.
Thank you. I get three more seconds now. I think the point I'm trying to make is that we really need to pass the issue about the rollback. And if you put them both on at the same time, you create a substantial amount of confusion within the community about what is what, and who is who, and whether they, you know, should both be together. And if somebody really hates the idea of raising the opportunity to 6 percent, they may vote no on both. And so I think from, and I'm a political junkie, everybody knows that, I think the best method here would be to separate the two, have some more discussion about how we go about fixing the long-term replacement and maintenance issue. I spoke with Craig Daniels, and I served on the Water Rate Advisory Group. We, you know, another group of diverse citizens. I believe that the discussions that we had, we never really had a vote. We never had an opportunity to say, this is where we are on that issue. But I believe that there were a lot of us community leaders who felt like there's a better structure to fix the issue, other than raising the rates a little bit at a time, and to kind of counteract William's claim. I think you could do a revenue bond, you could tie it to the rates, and once the, you know, you could raise the rates to deal with the revenue bond, and then those rates, that piece of the rate would go away once the bond was paid off. The cost of that money would be counteracted by the cost of inflation in materials and labor costs, and all those other kinds of things that go up year after year over the 20 or 25 years that it's going to take to fix the 75 miles, or whatever it is we're talking about. But I really believe that these two issues have to be separated by a period of time. And we have to fix the most critical issue first. So I would encourage you, especially in the political climate that we have in Clackamas County, to fix the one thing that looks really good and says, well, you know, we made this, you know, it wasn't an intentional mistake, but, you know, it happened. And then let's have a longer, more drawn-out, you know, really discussion about what the mechanism is to fix the issue that we've been kicking down the road for 25 years.
Thank you. Paul Edgar?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Paul Edgar from Kanema, Oregon City. Remember Kanema, though. I am very concerned that the amount of liquid cash people will have in their pockets with the economy and with the new taxes that are coming in, withholding taxes, creates a new level of scrutiny right now on any rate. They have just started to realize the amount of available monies that they have in each household to cover a lot of costs, including high gas, we might even say our road maintenance fees and everything. But all of a sudden, the tax withholdings are starting to really add up. And we get into this, they're paying taxes. These people are going to be really, really short. And I just have great fear that this 6 percent proposed rate increase is more than they can vote for. Just period is going to be the timing, and part of it is timing. Okay? Right now, I just don't believe that that is going to be a win-win for the city. Now, I have no problems whatsoever with the rollback, putting that on the ballot, and maintaining the annual 3 percent increases that we've been getting. But I think that once we look at taking this new amount up at this time, you're asking for that part of this proposal to fail. I just, it's just the gut feel in my, that it's more than what voters will do. At the same time, I still believe that the amount of money that we've been transferring out of the water rates funds, like this last year, $500,000 to the building fund, should be all restored back into water rate maintenance activities, and we should be taking those funds and accelerating those activities that we can do with the use of those funds, brought back to where they should be right now, as fast as we can. At the same time, I look at projects, and I think I'm nervous about them, where we have a great deal of water loss out of the main Mountain View reservoir. Not, we earthquakeed it, and it's all nice and earthquakeed up, but we didn't stop the leaks. And that water that we're putting into that Mountain View reservoir is treated, bought water, and we're putting it into the ground, too much of it. And I think that if we went through and we were cherry-picking areas that John and staff could identify, where we have critical leakages or loss of water, treated water, we could go through and start leveling the playing field a little bit. And I think we should be proactively and pragmatically looking at any of those areas. But if I took this money back in from the, that we transferred away from water rates, and put it back into straight maintenance right now, and got on every single project that I know, or somebody could identify where we have real water loss, okay, and just prioritize those up. This is higher than some of the, maybe some pipes or something where I'm doing a deal. But just trying to find areas where I can get straight return on investment, in the fastest possible way I can, I think is very, would be a very smart way. I just don't believe that the 6 percent right now is wise. Thank you.
Just one thing that you said confused me a bit. You said, transfer money from street maintenance?
No, from water maintenance, into the Public Works Building Fund. So the last two years has been, if I remember correctly, going through the budget, the line items of the budget, we transferred $500,000 out of this, out of the water funds into the building fund. And so if those numbers are correct, then, and I, in the preceding, so we've got, the preceding year, I think...
I think we followed your argument, and the time's over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Carol, do you want, can Tom proceed you?
Sure.
Tom Guile?
Is it, Mayor, is it appropriate for me to interject a couple of comments?
I think, why don't we have the discussion afterwards? I think...
I've been making notes.
No, Tom Guile, Oregon City. No prepared comments, but something Betty said, and what Dan had said, and a few others, just a quick observation. I happen to watch CNBC almost every day religiously, and they had Suzy Orman on there this morning. And I'm sure you shake your head like you know Suzy. And they were commenting about the fact that as gas prices rise, right now they're at $3.50, and she said for every rise, and they were all agreeing, up to $4, people begin to pull back on spending at restaurants, going to the local mall, and driving their car, taking vacations, they change their vacation plans. And several people were commenting that restaurants right now are seeing a hit as the gas prices continue to go up almost daily. And they were saying that trying to plan your business right now, and trying to get money out of people as we get in towards May, which is where we reach the highest gas prices, it's just hit me. That's when the election's going to be on, when it's probably going to be the highest gas price right there in May. It's something you may not have thought about. And I didn't think about it until Betty brought it up, and Dan. That timing might be a little rough on you with, if it hits $4 a gallon or goes a little higher, because people will pull back on their spending. It's a factual matter. That's all. Thanks. Have a good time with this.
Commissioner Paul. Such candor.
No, those are very good points. And Paul had very good points, too, about the economic climate. I mean, I think we've all felt it, certainly. And just coming out of the recession, or if we are coming out of the recession, it's, you know, it's been a hard road for a lot of people. A five-year bond would increase the rates way over the 6 percent annually. That would hit people even harder than pacing it over time. And there, I know, you know, there's a lot of political pressure, but I'm looking at this from a business standpoint. You know, what makes sense? And other cities are in the same predicament that we are right now. And a lot of them are looking at even a higher increase, because the fact is, our infrastructure has been aging. And I, you know, during the recession, I cut our cable bill. There's things that I've had to cut personally. I learned how to get a really, well, we won't talk about the antenna, but anyway. You know, you just, the water is a necessity, and I want to make sure we're doing right by our citizens by ensuring that we have good, reliable water. The further we kick the can and push it down the road, there's been cities that have had sinkholes and major problems. It's much more expensive than the 6 percent annually. I think we should give voters a chance to vote on this. Give them a chance to vote.
Commissioner Moon?
Good points. Everybody made really good points. A couple of things that I kind of jotted down was the building maintenance fund that was referred to. I totally think that we need to be saving to build. We need to save to have money to buy property. We cannot just not plan for the future. I'm always saying, in 20 years, where will we be? We have to plan for the future. And so many of the prior commissioners have been kind of short-sighted on that. So I totally don't think that we need to take the maintenance fund money out and put it back. I'd actually like to see more go in there. But that's a discussion for another day. I don't think that we need to have any more discussion on rate or bond, because I don't think that we're ever going to get anybody on the same page with that. There's going to be strong supporters of only doing a bond, and a strong supporter of only doing a 6 percent rate increase. And the other thing I want to remind you guys, in May, the CRW, Clackamas River Water, will be having a recall on the ballot also. And it has been brought up that our citizens don't always know where they get their water. I've gotten emails, I know myself, and I've said it before, stop fighting amongst yourself on the water board. And it's not us. But our citizens don't always know where their water comes from. So those are just a couple of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Holliday was correct. I should have opened the public hearing. I didn't do it. Therefore, I will close it. Therefore, I will, therefore I will close it. And I'm sure David Fraser has some things to say.
Are there other commissioners that have comments they want to make? Because I can wait.
I mean, I think, I think Betty made two good points. One is that we, we have aging infrastructure. We also have aging facilities. And I'm thinking of the, of the Public Works facility. It is far too small to operate as it has for a city of this size, and we need to look for a good site. And I agree with her completely that it makes more sense to save for a facility than perhaps try to go out for a bond to pay for it later on. It's going to cost a lot more. And the proportion of money that is being taken from the, from the respective funds that come out on the utility bills is actually fairly small.
It's actually $400,000 is what, as opposed to what was mentioned in testimony.
Yeah, so-
Per year.
Per year. And so, I guess, from my standpoint, the thing we ought to be debating is whether we have the two motions. But I do, I do, I do want to, I do want to have some discussion, because it's come out, the, the issue of the general revenue bond versus the, versus a general obligation bond versus actually having our rates increased and the, the upsides and downsides. So if you all would address that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. The, the general obligation bond is not, is not going to be something I can recommend to you for fixing a capital need in a utility system, primarily because your general obligation bonds are paid for by your property taxpayers only. Because you have a disproportionately high number of exempt properties in your city, all of those exempt properties that use water pay for the water system. And so I would be recommending that to spread that burden out wider amongst the people that are actually benefiting from the utility system. The most fair way to ensure that more people on that system pay for the system's needs is to use a revenue bond or the rates. And curiously, the rates are paid, the rates are going to pay the revenue bond, or the rates are going to pay as you go. So you're still looking at the rate payers, who arguably should be paying not just for the pipes that are in the ground, but for housing the facilities that make the system operable. So that's, to me, the rationale leads right into why you would save money for the building of the facilities, because you're spreading that out not just amongst your taxpayers, most of whom are water customers, but also across all those, I mean, and there are millions and millions of dollars worth of tax-exempt properties in your city, and it's, it's simply not fair to your average residential or business property taxpayer to bear the burden of that system for others. We do that enough already in Oregon City. I look at the police department or virtually any service we provide in this room, apart from utilities, we subsidize a lot already. And I just don't think it would be, it wouldn't be something I would recommend you do as a, as a matter of math or equity. And then I did want to say something about, it seems the position you're in, while I, I think the irony is that we got here by somebody once upon a time kicked the can down the road. And now here we are, talking about whether we should do some version of that as well. But the concern that I have is, is this is like a laceration in your arm that's gone through the shirt and into your skin, and you want to stop the bleeding. The question is, can you stop the bleeding while you're also sewing up the shirt at the same time? And I'm a little bit concerned that some of the thread is going to go places it shouldn't go. And, and by that, let me just say that the, I don't think this thing is really complicated when it's looked at separately, but when they're looked at together, I've been reading through this, trying to pretend that I'm an ordinary citizen, getting this, and I don't have any information about it. Because we're, everybody in this room are what I would call well-informed, some of you really well-informed about this issue. And even those that are remotely informed in this room are far more informed than the average Oregon City resident. And I'm afraid the way we've authored these measures and just the complex nature of Section 58 to begin with, I mean, it's, it's a convoluted measure to begin, it does multiple things. And we had to have how many legal opinions, just trying to figure out what it actually did. So we are going to be putting these two things on the ballot side by side and asking people to sort of figure that out. And that is the scary part to me, is whether that there is some resonating with me on whether or not it will confuse voters about what they're voting on and what they're not voting on by having them on there together. So, you know, that's just a big concern to me, because we really need to stop the bleeding. That's the number one thing we need to do, because we can keep the system solvent. We can't fix the pipes. We definitely need to do that.
Well, I don't think any up here, anybody up here disagrees with you. It's just time.
Right.
You know?
And, and having them on there together, I can see the merits of it, is what I'm saying. I can see that there's a real likelihood of having people confused by having them on there together. It's not an easy answer. There's an argument, too, for having them on there together and seeing how people react to it, because you do have enough lead time to do it again. But if you get one of these taken care of each election, then you've really solved your problem in a big, meaningful way. And we can bring in some, I think what we're going to find is the transaction cost between a revenue bond or paying as you go with rates. You're going to see some pretty significant differences in the costs. And if you see those significant differences in the costs, and those are, those are part of the discussion leading up to a second ballot measure in the next election after this one, if you decide to put these on separate elections, I think you'll have a really, maybe a little bit more informed debate about which of those choices you want to go with. Because I'm a little panicked right now that we could be, actually have an insolvent system. And I think all of us are. And so we're sort of panicked about that, but we really want to do the right thing on how to fix the pipes long-term. We're having trouble focusing on that, because our intellectual energy is going toward the fear of an insolvent system. So I think I've said enough about, about it, but, you know, it's a tough call.
Sharing what John Lewis had shared with me was that if we're going for a bond, and it was, I believe, like Mr. Giver mentioned, it's one of those things you want to pay off right away, and therefore you want to do as much as you can and as quick of a time as possible. And he was indicating that we had roughly 50 miles, I guess, of actually a pipe that we have to deal with. That's, and if, if in fact we tried to do it in a short period of time, like five years, that would be tearing up 10 miles of street every year, and that would be traffic mayhem. So I mean, it has to be done, it has to be done in a scheduled way. It's going to take us some time to get through that deferred maintenance piece, but we can't completely inconvenience the, the public and the process. I mean, we've seen what happens when we tear up a half-mile segment in, in our city to do major street repairs and so forth, and it really messes things up. And if we're talking about trying to do 10 miles a year, I think it'd be a disaster. So, so I support, I don't, I don't, I don't, even if we decide that we're going to take the, the 6% to, to a different, to a different date for the vote of the people, I would not want to look at a bonding alternative. I think it'd be more, either it'd be far more inconvenient for the people that are on the, on the highways, or it'd be more costly, one of the two.
It probably wouldn't be very complicated for us to get some estimates from our underwriters about what the cost comparison would be later on, if you get to that point.
Yeah.
We'll bring those numbers out, and I think it'll be pretty obvious.
Although there's something we have to do tonight.
Absolutely.
Right. Yes. Commissioner Rohn?
Okay. Well, to your torn shirt with your wounded arm. Have you ever heard of a chitin shell bandage? You know, you slap those on really fast, put a hairdryer on it, and it separates your shirt from your wound and gives you time to work on the shirt. So I think that we're separating these issues out, and that's something we need to look at. And I don't recall in any of the scenarios we were given that we looked at a five-year bond repayment. So I think that that is, you know, talking about that, paying back that in a five-year term is, isn't valid, because-
Staff didn't talk about that.
That's what I thought. And so-
Tonight even. We haven't talked, I mean, it's been mentioned here, but I, that was-
Yeah. But using a five-year period-
My conversations with, with others about this, we've never talked about that short of payoff.
Right.
What we've talked about is doing what we need to do in five years.
Right. Right.
Paying off that, whatever that amount is that we borrow over a longer term.
Right. So I don't think that's a valid argument of, of, you know, we're going to have huge payback in that five years if we take out a bond for five years. So I don't think we've ever discussed that.
No, we, we said we'd have a huge payoff if we paid it off, if we tried to do what we need to do and paid it off over 20 years.
Right. Right.
Both of those are huge.
And the last thing is, you know, Oregon City residents are tough, Doug. We, we know what it's like to live with a torn-up bridge in town. So I'll tell you, I don't like to drag things out forever. I like to get stuff done. And, you know, I, I don't see that as a real detriment. That's it.
I did, I did check, just asked our new Assistant Finance Director to just pull some quick numbers for, you know, a $20 million bond over a 20-year period at 4% interest, and looked like it was about a $30 million payback. So that's, those are, that's a pretty big number to me when I think the other option is to, you know, to do it in a controlled fashion. But I, but again, I don't think tonight's about a bond measure, you know, are we, whether we're talking about bonding this or rates. I just, and I think the biggest concern I have is, again, consensus about this decision and a strong commitment from the city commission, including Commissioner Roth and Commissioner Mumm, who's, who's kind of left me with the impression that they were feeling pretty strong about these measures or a measure, to, you know, inform that community, because we have done a lot of things, but, you know, that next step was, you know, between now and May, to get out there and, I, you know, that, that's, that's important. And if what, if what we're hearing is we don't have consensus on that, then I do think we need to stop the bleeding and deal with that issue. And we've, we've, we, you know, we've got, we have time. I feel like, I feel like we have time to do the financial piece. It's a little disheartening to realize another six months of, you know, more discussion about water rates. You know, that, that's something I, you know, I feel like, I know my staff, Alita's probably, you know, ready to move on to the next issue, you know, because we have several, we have several issues. But, you know, I mean, I, most of the work is done here, you know, if we're talking about some kind of a rate increase in six months. I just, you know, it feels, it feels to me today and has felt very much like this is a setback, but not if we're successful, and not if, if Dan and others in the room are committed to that next step in November. And I think, you know, we can debate about what that solution should be in the next six months. And I think, I think you're right. If we start showing numbers, it'll, it'll show. And, you know, it doesn't, it could be multiple bonds. I don't know, you know, how we're going to do this, how, there's lots of scenarios. But I think if we've got Dan's commitment to knock on every door in Oregon City over the last six months-
Yeah, there you go.
Right.
Volunteer yourself.
And, you know, I want to say, I really do, I know you guys have put so much work into this, and I'm, I'm sorry that it does feel like a setback, but, you know, as we've gotten deeper and deeper into looking at this, sometimes you have to reevaluate your, your first stand. And I happen to be someone that lots of times speaks out and then has to go back and, don't laugh.
I do the same thing.
Has to go back and retract, you know, where I started. And so I just think that taking it a little bit slower and looking at what you're proposing is what we do, but I really do apologize for your setback.
I guess that's part of the game. I'm not, I'm not like Dan, the political junkie that some are, you know? So to me, it's like-
One softened point to that, though, would be that a lot of this work has been done. I mean, we are down to, I think, a consensus throughout the community that it should be paid for, whether it's a bond or as you go, with rates, so that everybody that's on that bus is buying a ticket. So we know that. So we're not going to be starting, I don't think, from scratch.
That's true.
If we do this again in six months, we will start, actually, three or four months before that six-month bell rings. And I think it'll be a much shorter discussion, because we have narrowed down the alternatives, and we know a lot about the problem.
Yeah. And I could see us starting the day after the election.
Okay. Because you still have your group together.
That's right.
I, what I don't want to be in a position is to have us unable to really speak to the difference between taking out a bond and increasing the rates in an argument for something in May. I'd rather have that information so that we can argue it in a logical way. And when I first was hearing the discussion, I was feeling that we should get the two measures on, but I'm not so certain that's the case. If there's uncertainty on our part, which alternative is the best of the two? I will say, yeah, we, we in Oregon City that survived the bridge were tough. We have, we have businesses that did not survive the bridge.
That's true.
With that, Mr. Commissioner Snid.
I guess, before we make a decision, I would say that it's, I would like to have at least a little bit more discussion as a commission to make sure that, that we're all in unison on this, because I think not being in unison on this decision sets, we need to be all on board with what we're doing right now, so that we can go forward and, and there's no question about where we are as a commission on this. So if we, if we do split the two measures, then we probably can't vote on this resolution as it is right this moment, because the explanatory statements specifically refer to the measures together. So we, okay.
So that's all I wanted to- Yeah. And so we've got our attorney ready to go with that's a decision.
I just feel that we should be together.
Yes, I agree. Commissioner Mumm?
Thank you. Good comments tonight. I do want this to be successful, sorry. I don't think we have to have any more discussion on the rate part. I think there's been a lot of work that you had said, David. So I think we could, can we divide them and vote on them separately tonight, or not?
I think we have to, we have to, we have to vote on them separately. My suggestion would be this, that we, we're going to look for some apparently new, new language, should we go the one direction. And rather than, and I think we can do this, we can go ahead and we can take a vote whether to consider only the one issue first, so we don't necessarily have no votes coming in place in terms of the actual pass of the, of the resolution. So we could have a motion, I think, to begin with, to deal with only the one measure. We could take that vote, and if anybody votes no on that, that's okay. You're not voting against the measure itself. So I could hear a motion before we start the process of actually voting on a resolution to make the decision to look at only the one measure, a vote to look at only the one measure. Can I do that?
Yes. Can I give you some advice?
Yes.
Absolutely. I was going to give you the chance.
You've been running around the room, so I was just waiting for you.
I may be the only person in the room without an opinion on what you should do. But as to the mechanics of this thing, if you're looking at one, my suggestion is that you move to Table 1302, and that way you don't have to vote on the merits of it at all. And let me give you on 1303, what I would revise it to read in the light of the fact that there aren't two measures going before the voters, if that's what you choose. So if you go to the resolution itself, you don't have any change until you get to the ballot title on the second page, I believe. I would eliminate the last paragraph in the ballot title, which talks about the other measure. Do you have that before you?
13, the resolution?
1303, ballot title, last paragraph would be excised. Same would occur on the notice of ballot title of the very last page. On the explanatory statement, because you have changed it, I need to revise the explanatory statement. I would take out the current last two paragraphs. I'll give you a chance to take a peek at those. And then I would add a paragraph, which I'll shout out in a minute.
The last?
The last two paragraphs and the current one. The last two paragraphs and the current one.
Now, we're looking at about the explanatory statement?
Explanatory statement, yes, for 1303.
Okay.
And then when you're ready, I'll read you what I would add.
I'm ready.
Okay. This measure would eliminate the rollback of water rates to 1994 levels plus those increases of not more than 3% annually. Any greater increase must be authorized by city voters. And we can certainly put this in writing if you want to see it before the end of the meeting, but that's.
I think that'd be fine.
I think it's fine.
I think that's fine.
Okay, so the first item, Mr. Mayor, would be your disposition of 1302.
Do I hear a motion to table?
So moved. I move to Table 1302.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Are we voting?
Yeah. Did you hit the second?
I can't get my screen to do anything.
Oh, no idea.
Okay, one second.
I did it.
I am just stuck.
Okay, we have here, Kathy, we got the, we got the motion second correct.
I'm stuck.
Well, take, take a vote, take a voice vote.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
No.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion has been tabled, and we'll go over to.
Clarification question, Mayor.
Yes.
Would that, Counselor Sullivan, would that maintain the rates at the current rates as of today?
You've just not taken action on the first one. They haven't done the second.
I understand. The language that you proposed for the second.
Would leave the current rates in place, effectively leave them in place.
Okay.
The question was proposed, and I think I should bring it up. Somebody asked a question, well, what about the times we didn't increase the rates?
I have deliberately avoided that question.
Good job.
I can take that question, Mayor.
But now you get to answer.
Okay, and then.
Staff has implemented the rates. When the 62.5% increase was made in the first year, and that maintained our bond covenants, there were certain years where 3% were not increased.
That's correct.
With the implication of the 62.5% as pervasive. So, the decision-makers at the time had implemented 62.5%, decided for a couple of years not to put in 3% as a result of that. We're in a position where our rates are higher than where we would have had annual increases of 3%. So, I think the language should be very clear, we're going to maintain today's rates, and we can avoid the discussion whatsoever of what the commissions decided in the past, because you really, you, all the, if I'm making sense, if the former commissions were in a position of having a 62.5% increase in that first year, they wouldn't have made up for that with 3% annual increases thereafter. So, I believe what the commission's trying to accomplish is to maintain the rates at their current status, and the language needs to reflect that.
The question was raised, and I wanted to have that made. Clear, clear, thank you. Do I hear a motion then?
If you want to keep the language I just read, it would be to adopt Resolution 1303 with the revisions made orally tonight by the city attorney.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Betty Mum, seconded by Commissioner Smith. That roll call, please.
Commissioner Polly?
No.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Passes forward to one. With that, we get to move on to the legislative proposed amendments to the land use appeals process. We have a staff report. There was an earlier discussion whether we wanted to go to a hearings officer. We decided we did not want to, and therefore I believe the planning commission works soon.
Before everybody leaves, can I just make a comment? This green postcard came in the mail. If you want to participate in the transportation system update, please participate by attending the March meeting. Thank you. Yeah, I just didn't want them all to leave without, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And so we'll have a staff report. The planning commission has recommended some changes to our current, having almost as much trouble as you are.
Thank you, Mayor, and the commissioners. I'll be presenting legislative file L-12-01, which are proposed amendments to the land use appeal process. It's in the Oregon City Municipal Code. As the mayor stated, we brought this before you in a work session and had a discussion about the opportunity to hold a, to forward land use appeals to a hearings officer. The decision was made that wasn't necessary at this time, so we've removed all language concerning hearings officer from the proposed text amendments. Essentially, what you have left over that we are recommending, and the planning commission has recommended approval of our administrative cleanup of, A, how we hold appeals. So, for a type-two land decision, which is what staff issues, what comes out of my office, it would, it would essentially change that any person who has been affected or aggrieved would have the opportunity to appeal that decision, rather than right now where it's only people who've submitted comments in writing during the comment period. So, it broadens those folks who would be able to appeal even if they did not submit written comments during the comment period. It also amends the appeal hearing process to a de novo hearing, which essentially means a brand-new hearing in front of the city commission, because this would, and why that happens is that this would be the first evidentiary hearing of the type-two decision, therefore it is a, essentially a new hearing, new information, new arguments could be brought forward. It's a little bit different than what you see in a type-three, which is the planning commission issues a decision, so they've already had a public evidentiary hearing. So, that's why a type-three decision, when it's appealed to you, the record's closed, so no new evidence, no new argument. So, that would be the one difference, and we are making this proposed change to comply with ORS 227175, 10AC, and D. We have also, so those are, those are the proposed changes here. They are administrative, they're relatively minor, and they do bring us into compliance with Oregon revised statutes as they pertain to type-three, or, I'm sorry, type-two decisions and appeals. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
I have a question.
Sure.
Section D, there's a big part there under the first paragraph, or in the first paragraph that says notice of application and planning commission, and it's taken out. I'm wondering why that's being taken out, unless I'm not understanding something right. It says notice of application and planning commission hearing is published and mailed to the applicant, recognized neighborhood associations.
New question.
It's page three.
Page three.
Mm-hmm.
I think essentially what it's doing is it is controlled by ORS 197-763, which lays out the noticing requirements, so it's, it's not needed to be in there.
So, it's redundant?
Yes. We also have this information in other sections when, under our public noticing requirements that lays out how that's done.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns?
It's not the thing we deal with, but E, the expedited land division process, this is something that doesn't go through any formal committees, is that right?
What page are you on?
This is, this is page three at the end, it's E.
So, an expedited land division process is something that an applicant can, can choose to submit a subdivision application or partition application through that type of a decision. It's mandated by the Oregon revised statute, so we have to provide that opportunity for them to do that. We have a separate fee structure set up for that, because the process is a little bit different, it's more accelerated, as well as how the appeals and hearings of that, of that would occur.
But it appears it does not come before the planning commission or the city commission, or am I missing something?
That's correct.
So, what is it about it that makes it, that, sorry, actually, takes away our home authority?
Is, it's a requirement from the state. It's a state-mandated process that we have to allow for residential development, specifically subdivisions and partitions.
Okay, so in other words, the state statute precludes us from reviewing this.
Correct.
All right. It had nothing that was edited, so it's always been there, and I never, I never raised a question before.
You've never read that before?
Well, we hear, we heard type-twos, type-threes, type-fours, and then I just saw this, and there's a reason, I guess, we never heard of it before.
We very rarely see expedited, I think, in the 211, 12 years here. We've seen about three of them. Most folks just go through the regular process.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Excuse me, Mayor, there's a speaker.
Oh, we do have a request. Okay, sorry. Paul Edgar.
Thank you, Paul Edgar. I'm Oregon City, I represent the CIC as the land use chair of, of the CIC, and this whole idea of appeals, I had had some dialogue when we were talking, looking through the bylaws of the CIC and about our desire to have appeals of, in land use situations, and so I was concerned if, if kind of there was a decision made, but yet we get from the neighborhoods, interaction of people, and they come through the neighborhood associations into the CIC, and all of a sudden, at the CIC level, we see, oh, there's something we missed or didn't see or should have done, but it's because we're getting people coming to us kind of after the fact, and so can we then come in and enter into the appeal process and appeal it as the CIC? And how does that play out within this new revision?
Okay, so, speaking hypotheticals here, in terms of, it depends on what type of an application it is. If it's a type-three application, it's in front of the planning commission, you need to have been on the record, whether that be in writing or via the hearing, of what your objection is. If you've missed that opportunity and something comes up later, you, you don't have the ability to appeal. If it's a type-two decision, so a staff-level decision, what's changed, what's changed here is that anybody who can show that they've been affected or aggrieved, even if they haven't participated in writing, has the right to appeal, but that appeal has to happen within 14 days of the notice of decision. If 14 days have passed, there is no ability to appeal at that point.
I'll pose the question, does that apply to the city commission? At what point can we no longer appeal to ourselves, I suppose? That is, we can do that. At what point can we not do that? Is that also 14 days?
Ability to call up a decision.
Yes.
We're going to have to look into if there's a time limitation on that.
The point is, and I don't, I won't generally recommend it, I mean, the commission itself can call for the decision of the planning commission. The city commission can do so.
You know, I'm aware of this, if we've not said anything, we just, we don't have status into this, and I, so, is it, was it, was, is it a type-three when we are doing maybe re-subdividing land? Which?
A type-three is traditionally a conditional use, it's in front of the planning commission, usually it's conditional use of variance, a master plan, those are your type-three decisions. Type-two decisions are typically partitions, subdivisions, that don't require any type of variance to them.
It's just, they're just as cases, it seems like, that, where all of a sudden somebody says, well, Paul, have you read this, or has the neighborhood seen this? And these things slip by, and, and, you know, and, and all of a sudden you say, no, and it's like, no, I'm not the traffic cop that reads every, every dump, everything, and so, but it, but all of a sudden they're saying, well, this is important, and so it's this whole idea of being able to, to, to be able to be responsive to the citizenry in the best way we can through, with appeals, and, and if it's right, if it's right, and it's wrong, it's wrong, and let's, but let's make sure that we don't have unnecessary roadblocks.
Well, I was just sort of going to make the comment, that you have to have a process that the people that are putting forward a land use application can guarantee it's going to get through the process in a given, reasonable, given time, and I.
I know.
And that's what it's set, it's set to do, and if it's that important of a thing, you've got time to, you've got time to speak to it.
Is there a method that the CIC is notified of these things?
Yes, there is.
Always, always. Well, the neighborhood associations.
Yeah.
And the CIC.
But we've had, we've had stuff come into our neighborhood and, on, on different land use things, and it's somehow, sometimes, some of the things have gone astray, whether it's my fault, or our fault, or who, but it's, when they, and then all of a sudden it's kind of virtually an after-the-fact, and it's fearful, because when we're, in our case, when we're literally protecting a national register historic district like Kanema, these things become really close to our heart, because maintaining historic integrity is really critical, and so we, but, and so, we fight hard to make sure that we're doing things smart and right in that regard, so, but I just would love to see us have as many options as we can to make sure we're, we're being, we're being responsible. I want to be responsible to the builders, too, you know, it's not like I want to have something come after the fact and create problems for them, but anyway, it's just trying to be smart. Thank you.
Well, I think we want to make sure that everybody's informed, not just Kanema, but in the CIC.
Yeah, absolutely. This is.
And I know that our staff does a good job of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, we're going to take action on this, but we're going to come back, there's a bit of more editing.
I love doing these things on the fly.
It's a great job. I hear flexible.
But we're going to finish the, we're going to finish this particular item.
I'd have to put you on the spot. There was a question about the ability of the city commission to call up a decision if it, if it falls under the 14-day appeal.
I think it is inherent in the statutory framework. I think you can do it, whether you have it in your ordinance or not, so long as you're within the time.
But why don't we go beyond the 14 days? That was the question.
Well, you have to be within the 14 days.
So, the city commission can call it up itself, but.
Yes.
Yeah. But we're still bound by the same situation. You would be, so, yeah. With that, do I hear a motion? Or any other discussion?
Move to approve 13-116 legislative file 12-01.
Don't you want it read first?
Oh, I did a mayor, didn't I?
Yes, you did. I haven't done it for a while either.
I know.
I'm not mayor, I can't make a motion.
You said let's make a motion, I did.
Yep, and first read it.
Do you want me to read? Okay, this is ordinance 13-1005, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City, amending Title 17, zoning chapter 17.50, administration and procedures.
It's going to move to second, but roll call, please.
Who was the second? I'm sorry?
Me, and this is, this is putting me in automatically again.
We'll just do it. We're having an upgrade really soon. Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Passes you now, this one. Okay, we want, we'll go back then to the, to make apparently an additional change on the previous.
If you could go back to your, if I can get this in as well, go back to the ballot title, and go to the second paragraph of the ballot title. I can't get it up either here. Look at this, the second paragraph, the one that begins with section 58 of the city charter, and the language that I would change is at the end, so I'll read, "And if this provision is not adopted, water rates would be set back to 1994 water rates, plus those increases of not more than 3% annually." There was a conflict in the language of that and the ballot explanation, so.
Could you do that one more time, Frank?
Yes. Look at the second, it's now the last paragraph in the summary, about four lines up in the bottom. "And if this provision is not adopted..." See that?
Yes.
Okay. "Water rates would be set back to 1994 water rates." Scratch the rest and add, "Plus those increases of not more than 3% annually."
What about retaining the increases of not more than? Because it shows that we're not adding anything extra. We're just retaining what the increases already have been. Isn't that what you said?
No, we didn't quite. That seems a little clearer, I think, from the intent. I don't know if the language is right.
Here's the la la problem with that. And that is that you're under a federal court decree not to increase. And then the issue becomes, what happens when that goes away? You don't really retain those. You go back. So that's why I wrote the language carefully and tried to check, track the language of the charter.
If I could add as well, I think that's appropriate language because it's consistent with the original charter change provision. Language is exactly the same, indicating that annual rate increases, should the measure not be passed, this one, rates will roll back to 94, plus the applicable 3% rates. It's how it's worded in the original measure.
So...
That would bring us to rates as they stand today.
Right.
I'll be the procedural quirk and suggest that you reconsider the adoption of Resolution 13.03. And then I'll give you the language once you do reconsider.
So a motion to reconsider.
Move to approve.
No, move to reconsider.
Reconsider. Move to reconsider.
Second.
No, I've already seconded it. You don't, I don't have to.
Has been moved and seconded, moved by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Roth. Is that right?
Yeah, I guess.
The roll call, please.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then the motion would be to adopt 1303 with the changes previously made and the additional change just read by the city attorney.
So moved.
Second. Speaking of... Roll call, please.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for coming back with it. Okay. That, we're back into the agenda. We're back, we're to the consent agenda, I believe. Let me pause.
General business?
General business, yeah.
7A.
7A, excuse me. Yes, pardon me. Collaborative planning agreement between the city of Oregon City and, oh, P, yes, right, Peter McKittrick, trustee of the Blue Heron Paper Company. It'd be Tony Cockle, I presume, or the city manager? Which?
It'd be me. Thank you, Mayor, and the commissioners again. At our work session last week, I laid out the general parameters of the collaborative planning agreement that we've been negotiating with Mr. McKittrick, the bankruptcy trustee for the Blue Heron site. What this essentially does is lays out the responsibilities for the development of the master planning and entitlement process for the property and the responsibilities and obligations of both the city as well as Mr. McKittrick as the trustee of the site. We've identified funds that we would be bringing to the planning process. And we've also identified that some of those funds are going to be coming from other sources, including Clackamas County and a construction excise tax with Metro. If we're unable to secure those funds, we do have the ability to terminate this agreement with the trustee, or he could terminate that with us as well. The main part is that essentially, once we enter into a contract with the lead consultant for the master planning entitlement process, the bankruptcy trustee agrees to not abandon the site until May 2014, allowing us time to perform that master planning process plus submit the land use application process towards the end of that. The, obviously, one of the risks that we do take here is that the court at any time could direct the trustee to do so. And we acknowledge that risk going into this. The trustee also agrees to bring $50,000 to the planning process with $25,000 of it due upon signing of the contract and the remaining 25 upon completion of the product. The trustee, I think it's important to note here, also is making a commitment to us that is a larger financial commitment in just the $50,000 to the planning process. Essentially, NRI is going to be, their contracts up towards August, September of this year. Right now, NRI is responsible for all the property maintenance costs. The trustee is estimating that for him to continue to hold that property from when NRI leaves through April, May of 2014, he's looking at an additional $200,000 in just property, maintenance, upkeep, everything else that goes along with maintaining a 23 acre site along the river. So it is a significant investment by the trustee into this prot, into this partnership that we're trying to create in order to do the public master planning and visioning and entitlement process for the property. So those are, those are the high level, larger issues. There are obviously other commitments in there that, you know, the trustee agrees to cooperate with us through the planning process. He agrees to sign the land use application. Once that's, that's made, you know, the other risk here is that, you know, the trustee could sell this at any point during this process. Sale of the property is not prohibited. But, you know, we see and what we're hearing from the private side is that, you know, they want to work with the public sector. You know, they see this as a public-private partnership as well as, you know, they need to get the entitlements as well for anything other than general industrial on that site, which we don't believe is probably going to be the next use of that property. With that, I'd be happy to walk through any specifics of the agreement or answer any questions you have.
I was surprised. Probably a dumb question. Where does the trustee get his money from?
Through the liquid, I mean, part of it's been through the liquidation of materials on the site, other assets that were available through the company.
Machinery, sales.
Yeah, okay. Do we have, I noticed we have, we have a public comment, but does any, do any of the commissioners have any questions at this point?
I don't have any questions. So comment was good. I mean, it's great. I like it.
With that, Mr. Nocita and Mr. Edgar, please come forward. The first one called is Mr. Nocita. Nope, you can't be polite.
James Nocita, Oregon City. I live right above the mill, so I spend a lot of time walking along the promenade, looking down on it and thinking about it. Took a look at this agenda item and printed this out. And I like the general direction of it, but I have some really significant concerns about it that I'd like to share. And I'm hoping, I don't, I'm not in a position ever anymore to get here in time for work sessions. This is the time I have to make comments. Three points. One, I'm really concerned about the attachments on here. And it, the, I assume, because these are attachments, that the agreement is going to be the precursor to going out for an RFP on the public process that's described in the collaborative planning agreement. And it's really the, some of the items in the attachments that concerns me. The most significant one is the presupposition of zoning this MUD. A zoning application is supposed to be the end product of a planning process. You develop your vision, and then you implement the tools and the codes to implement that vision. Here, this presupposes MUD zoning on the property. And that's concerning to me for, for a couple of reasons. One is, while I think it's kind of a consensus that general industry won't be the zoning for this, I'm concerned about MUD for a couple of reasons. One, I think it's a constrained zoning for what could happen on the site. It will preclude things. And if you, if you presuppose that MUD zoning at the very beginning of the process, I mean, it's, I mean, the website talked about Goal Five, increasing citizen communication and participation. The participation will be constrained because the citizens won't be able to offer a vision that strays from the presupposed zoning. And I think that's, that's a huge concern. MUD zoning, they, the, it doesn't, I don't believe allows for some types of economic development and employment that might be appropriate for this site. This site has rail. This site has water access. This site has Highway 99 access. There are a lot of types that could be, of uses that could be very attractive for the site that won't fit into the shoehorn or into the straitjacket of MUD zoning. And I think it'd be a really real mistake to, from the, from the get-go, just decide MUD zoning, if you're gonna have a visioning process, you have to do that vision within the, within the confines of what MUD zoning will allow you. Create something new. I mean, if you, if the citizens develop a vision that doesn't fit MUD zoning, I think this, this should just excise all of the references to MUD zoning and allow, even if we have to draft a new type of zone to apply to the site, do that. I mean, MUD zoning is a relatively new zoning. It didn't exist, and it was invented. We, we should have the flexibility to invent something new if the visioning process of the citizens leads us there. Second concern I have, and this might not be as feasible politically for the city, but at the outset of the, when the mill went, failed a couple of years ago, the commission was really in consensus that we had to preserve the heritage and of the mill tradition. It's, it's kind of stunning to me, reviewing this, how the preservation of the national registered historic structures have just, just been pushed back way, way to the margins of this process. And, and it's barely discussed. It's barely given value. I would hope that, again, once, once you've set something in stone at the outset, it's, it's hard to go back. And I think the prominence of the value of historic preservation of these historic structures should be ratcheted up immensely in this, to the point of even trying to negotiate with the trustee that before we enter into this agreement, that he will agree to allow local designation of the national register eligible buildings within the mill site. And the third point that I have, I'll take it really quickly. I'm concerned, again, we talked about transparency. I just want to point out that I was really struck by the fact that there's references in here to an Exhibit A and an Exhibit B of this RFP, which are here. But then there appears to be a CD and Exhibit E, especially Exhibit E, which is referenced and not included in the package. That you're being asked to make a decision again by staff without complete information, or the public's being asked to make a decision by, without complete information. And I said at the, during Citizen Comment, that, you know, while we hold accountable and credit people for transparency, we should also hold accountable for non-transparency. And I think not including all the exhibits is unfortunate in this instance. And I would really recommend that the commission table this till the next meeting and have the agenda aired again the first meeting of March with full exhibits in the packet. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Edgar.
Thank you. Paul Edgar, Kanema. And also the land use chair of the neighborhood, of the downtown area as a result of CIC. I have a big concern, and I see it's a foregone conclusion, that we're going to be rezoning that from industrial. And my concern is, is the long-term planning, where we're going to put the industrial zoning. So if I understand Metro, the way Metro would like us to act, and what we kind of have to do, is when we, if we're to take and change this industrial zoning, we have to take it and put that industrial zoning someplace else. And so not only is in this plan, and what we're looking at, is we need to be, really have some foresight, some planning, some thinking as to how we're going to handle and where we're going to go with this industrial zoning. Okay? Another thing is, is I, there is a natural connection to Kanema. The railroad spur starts in Kanema that, that comes into, right down into Main Street of, of Blue Heron. And I would like to think that when we start looking at a master plan, we look at some of those areas which are contiguous and connected, that are in Kanema, that could have a potential of, of being developed or being part of the development. Because we have underutilized properties in those areas. And, and there are some possibilities that if a visioning was taking place, we could expand our opportunities and, and some of the potentials. Just as an example, maybe, maybe Kanema, some of those areas is, is a access or a parking place or shuttle area that would come in. But who knows? But, but as part of this process, I'd like to think that we would, they're just connected, and we should be looking at them, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cockle?
Yes.
Wanted to talk about the concerns that have been laid out.
Sure. Concerning the first thing about, you know, that we're gonna acquire MUD, I think we've been very clear from the beginning that, you know, if we need to write a new zoning code, which we totally anticipate we will on the property, we will, we will do that. MUD is a place to start in terms of what uses, floor area ratios, heights are. I think that in the, in the discussion about the RFP, we try to be clear that, you know, through this master planning process is gonna drive what's allowed on the property. The bankruptcy trustee, as well as their representative, has been very clear that they want as much flexibility in terms of use and design that they can get. And that is certainly our intent. So I don't, I don't, I think it's a very valid point. And I think it's one that we have tried to convey all along, that when we discussed this at the work session concerning, you know, allowing that flexibility on the uses of the site because we don't know what is gonna be there, and that's gonna need to be market driven.
Can I ask a question? If it were designated MUD, would this allow the robot hotel firm that was talked about way back?
The air, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I missed that one, too.
No, you didn't.
Hydroponic facility, I believe, or something.
In the middle of a hotel or something.
Did you say robot?
Yeah.
I'm all of that.
I'm just trying to get an idea if, you know, would that be excluded? If we ever went there?
Under the current zoning, probably. But that's the whole point of doing this master plan and the visioning, is if we need to come up with a Willamette Fall Zone or a mixed-use downtown, south, whatever we're gonna call it. I think we all acknowledge that through this process, we're gonna, we're going to be trying to come up with what's appropriate here. And I think, as I've said, all I can say is that the code has been on the table all along to write, to tailor to this site because it is so unique.
And how much would, coming up with a unique zoning code, what would be a timeline for something like that? Would it be yet another 10 years?
It's hard, in terms of us writing it?
Uh huh.
Well, I mean, the...
And adopting it.
The intent is that we're gonna get something submitted through this process. Now, we may have to come back and, because of some of the uncertainties about what is gonna be on there, you know, maybe there's a master plan overlay on the site. And there's a lot of opportu, there's a lot of decisions that still need to be made. We have specifically not gone in and planned this site because we wanted to do the public visioning and get that input. But we have to start with some basics as a place to start from.
What I don't want to do is, is girdle ourselves into something that we're gonna take another two or three years to undo.
You know, I'd like to, I'd like to propose something because I actually agree completely with what Mr. Nocita mentioned a minute ago. And I, I hear our community development director agreeing, but we have different language here. So I want to suggest that we simply add a sentence under this mixed-use downtown paragraph that says, "The parties recognize that following the master planning process, a new and distinct zoning designation may..." And I think, I think this is clearly understood by the trustee, but there's no problem, I don't see any problem in restating that right up front in that paragraph so that nobody feels like we're roping ourselves in to a predetermined outcome.
Well, I guess I just, I would point on page three of five, and number two, the rezoning amendment of the comprehensive plan from GI to MUD or equivalent on the property, you know, we try to be specific that, we may not have the zone that's correct, and we acknowledge that up front.
It's in the agreement, it's not in the exhibit, and I guess that's where the rub came for people. So, I don't have a problem putting it in the exhibit, just to be sure.
Thank you.
Concerning the exhibits that are referenced in the attachment, there are no other exhibits to this. What, you know, we relied on and apologize that we didn't catch this when we put this together, that we, this was cut and paste from previous documents that have been created, including, for example, the Shields-Oblis-Johnson report that you received this afternoon. There are no other exhibits associated with this agreement.
I'm going to recommend getting the input we have and so forth, that we table this to a date certain, as we're not going to pass on this, because you're suggesting a rewrite, a little rewrite.
Well, only adding that sentence.
Only that.
So, you could take action adding that sentence.
Well, the exhibits need to be, that needs to be taken out.
Reference to those exhibits would need to be deleted, so that it only is the exhibits that are attached.
I presume, I presume this can come back to us next meeting.
I thought we needed to get this moving.
We do, but it's obviously not.
Well, I mean, if it's only two-
That's why I'm asking the question, is that going to do anything to her, like?
If you're not, if you're not comfortable to do it tonight, we will bring it back. Yes, this has impacts on the scheduling of this.
Yeah, if it comes back in the next meeting.
It's three weeks.
So, it's going to come back with the next meeting saying one sentence from you.
Or if you're comfortable passing it tonight with that one sentence that I added and correcting the exhibit reference.
Well, I have a question, we have the other-
If you're not, then we should wait.
Well, the site, the point was brought up about the historical site master plan. So, how do we deal with that?
There's a major reference to saying that, the argument listed here, let's see, where am I at? So, the entire argument about the non-designation of historic buildings refers to looking at, I'm on page, sorry, three of eight, I think.
You're on three or 10?
You're to 10 of 20.
What?
10 of 20.
Three of seven?
Well, I'm looking at the actual page, number three, it says three of eight, I'm under-
Up here is page 10, down there is page 11.
I'm under structures and buildings. It talks about, oh, well, maybe that isn't where I was seeing.
I think you're probably on the next page, historical significance.
Up above, historic significance. So, it goes through, talks about the historic significance of the site, talks about individual buildings, talks about that there are no designated historic structures on the property, that the site is not in a local or national district. However, a report was done by PGE, Blue Heron, and Westland Paper Company in 2002 in regards to significant structures on the site, and then an update in 2012.
It's on page five, Exhibit E is referenced twice.
Right, well, so basically it builds up to all this in saying that all the information that this is based on is visible in Exhibit E. So, it kind of explains that Exhibit E is a crucial component to the rationale behind what's written here, and if that doesn't exist-
Then take it out.
That's the problem.
I have a question on this too. Didn't Christina Robertson produce a whole report on the structures and their significance and everything? Wouldn't that be a good addition to this? Because everything I've ever heard about this site, there's been a reference to the historical structures, and I agree with Mr. Nacita, very important, and every tour I've had has, that has been stressed, the significance of the historic structures. So, would that be a good report, her report to include in this, or just to note it?
I think we're, we're trying to just reach an agreement to bring money to the table.
Right. Right, but if the agreement refers to an exhibit that's not there-
I guess we could take the whole Shields-Oblis-Johnson report and attach it to this, and it would serve absolutely no purpose.
Right.
Okay. The, all this is trying to do is lay out for the bankruptcy trustee that here are the general parameters of what we're going to try and do through this master planning process. It wasn't to identify specific buildings or any of the reports, it was to say, here's the work that we, that's been done, here's what we plan to do, and lay out a general framework for how we're going to do this master planning, visioning framework process, and what the, what the end product is supposed to be, is what we're trying to create right here with this agreement. There are going to be many opportunities for more specifics and review of plans and everything else that's been created through this process. There's no hiding anything from this commission concerning these attachments. You actually have all of these attachments as of this morning, and are, and were made available, so.
And maybe it would help too, if I reminded you that you're going to have, you have many aces in this, in this situation, and, for example, one of them would be the zoning, changing the zoning. Until the commission and the community are completely satisfied with the safeguards that are in place as part of the planning, that you've got enough tools in there to try to achieve the outcome that you want through that reconstruction, you won't be voting yes on that rezoning. So, I mean, there is a safeguard, if you will. It doesn't guarantee that we're going to have a property owner down there that's cooperative.
Right.
But it does guarantee that you won't have to make that decision until you're comfortable.
And I guess I'm just trying to, you know, we're trying to put together a partnership here with a bankruptcy trustee to try and get entitlements on the site to where the public can be involved upfront-
Right.
As to what the opportunity is here on the site. The same discussion about why we would not want to just say, oh, it has to be MUD, would be the same, Ari would argue, the same reason why we wouldn't sit here and tell the trustee, we're not going to work with you unless you agree to designate all your property. How do we know what we want on the site? We've done the studies, we're going to go through the public process, so to lock yourself in, and as a property owner, I would have reservations about that, and if the city decides that we're not willing to participate with you and bring these funds forward, then that's fine, that's a legitimate concern and a legitimate response, but, you know, how, the same, like I said, the same reason we don't want to impose a certain type of zoning on them would be the same reason we don't want to impose a certain restriction on them, when we really don't know the answer to it yet.
You have to start somewhere.
Right.
I'm glad the trustee's coming to the table with some money.
Yes.
That's good.
We have Commissioner Smith.
My only concern, my concern really isn't the exhibits or not the exhibits, my concern is, is the history that's there onsite, which I understand there's only so much that we can do to protect it, and unfortunately, I think the primarily most important features are already gone. The thing that concerns me in this is that it implies that all of, that there was sites, it implies that there was structures on that site that were significant up until 2012, when they started dismantling the site, and now they're not. And then it, so that's a, you know, and I understand we've done probably what we can do, I don't think, I just want to make sure that we're doing everything that the city has power to do to make sure that we're not going to lose any more of the history, because a lot of it's gone right now. And, you know, it's leaving every day, and I know that staff knows our concern about it and has been working on that, but just to see that implication, that up until, I mean, to have some of those historic components there all the way up until 2012 when the mill closes, and now they're, they're not something that we can even do anything about now, I mean, that's shocking.
I guess, I don't know if this would convey your, I mean, even if the building was designated, let's say it was designated locally.
Right.
Nothing would stop them from taking out the equipment, you know, which is essentially what they're, it is a difficult situation.
But it'll stop them from taking buildings down.
They haven't taken any buildings down.
No.
And under their current contract, they're not. They have taken down some, in UGAS, the commission's aware.
But they've affected the buildings enough that they would not become, and that could be intentional or unintentional. I mean, we saw that with, I hate to say, the state, the Liberty Theater. I mean, I just, so that's my main concern, I don't know what we do about it or if we can do anything about it.
You know, one option is that we try to work with the trustee, and we go through this visioning, and we have the discussion about that. In the end, local designation, you know, is, you know, you need to work with the property owner.
Yes.
Well, honestly, I mean, we've made it quite far. I mean, even a year ago, to think that we'd be at this stage was a crapshoot, so-
Knowing that we don't want to-
I'm not acknowledging that I'm not happy with where, I mean, I'm kind of excited about where we've been and where we're at, I mean, we could have almost never gotten to this point, so I'm kind of weighing both sides. I think, I think staff is more than aware of our concern about the history of that site, and-
I agree.
You know.
And we'll keep reminding you.
We have to have that, we have to have that conversation.
Commissioner Roth, you have something?
I had two questions. One was, when I spoke to Christina today, she mentioned that a letter had gone out to all five tribes.
As soon as, it will go out tomorrow morning, I had some signatures today.
I'm only seeing four tribes listed on here.
Were the RFP, or where exactly, just give me background data.
Page four of, oh.
Grand Ron, Warm Springs, Slots, Yakima, yeah.
Right.
Once, once again, let's not, and I know this is difficult, but this is constantly being upgraded through the RFP process, this isn't the, this isn't the binding, it's the layout of the framework, and, you know, I think that as we move through this, you know, those specifics are going to come forward.
Okay, but my point is, with that and with these other things that we're talking about, and we are really, really hitting hard for transparency, and so I think that we need to attach those exhibits, even though they don't, maybe don't have a lot to do with it, but just, it's, you know, an electronic attachment, it's not a big deal, and for the sake of transparency, and we don't want to get burned in any way on this, so I think that we want to, how can I say this nicely?
We're on the 11 o'clock.
That's it.
The other thing I wanted to comment on was that the story of your work is going to be part of the, is going to be part of the master planning process, I mean, things are going to be going through them as well, and they'll, I'm sure they'll have substantial input in terms of what might happen.
Well, I'd like to say that the reason we, the little city that could, has gotten as far as we have, the way we have so far in this thing, is because all of you have been comfortable, working together, working with staff, working with citizens on a challenging side and challenging issues. So, I'm sensing some degree of discomfort for some of you, and I think that that's enough, that we should bring it back. We'll take a couple of weeks and make the changes that you need to see and-
James, if you wanted to come forward now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to get some clarification. I made reference, Mr. Cockle, I heard, I understood reference, I just want to clarify if I heard it correctly. There were two points where you mentioned a report, but I didn't catch all of it with the word, the name Johnson in it. What report is that?
The Shields-Oblis-Johnson report that we did over the summer for due diligence on property acquisition.
Okay. And you indicated that it was provided to the commission today? Okay. Okay.
Although we were advised what was in it before today.
Okay. Got it. So, I guess, is that something that's available to the public?
Christina had said it was today, yes.
Okay, so, thank you.
Just, I mean, some of this is editing, you're wording, getting the fifth tribe in there, just, you know, you know.
Or taking five and making it a fourth.
And I realize this, you know, this is where everyone's comfortable, but this, this does have impacts on the schedule. We're going to release the RFP tomorrow, we will be out.
Which is, I don't want to hold it up, if there's any way possible, to move it forward.
I know everything's, we all want to be perfect, and when we had our work session on this, we thought we had it nailed down, but this is a process. So, some more things came forward, we'll work on them, we'll bring it back. It just means three weeks, that's three weeks.
So, how far out does that push our schedule?
Three weeks.
What else is affected by that?
It's the kickoff of the process, so.
But they've got other things going on, you've got other things going on simultaneously too.
They worked it.
So, we'll table this till the next meeting without a vote, I think, right? Okay. And I guess there was no consent agenda.
Yeah, there is.
I'm missing, where am I, oh, yes, the consent agenda, move for the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mom, seconded by Commissioner Polly, the roll call please, the roll please.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Hi.
Are you voting for me?
That, Communication City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, well, I want to segue from the last issue to the reality in my reports, which is that library ballot measure and some other city commission goals, I just want to remind you that most of them are tied to the timing of the success or failure, hopefully just the success of the water rate ballot measures that you have on there. So, if there are competing measures, just reminding everybody that I think our consensus at the retreat was that the timing would be, the water rate issues have to be resolved first. So, that does mean that your two-year goals could take a little longer, depending on how long it takes us to resolve the water issues.
Not ours.
Well, you know, so we have a three-week thing here, but it could be longer, depending on the success or the outcome of that, so. Also, Commissioners Polly and Mom and I have met with, continue to meet with Clackamas County officials in hopes of reaching an agreement on the dispute between the city and county on the dark fiber. I know I'm going to report those in more detail to you in executive session, but I wanted you to know that discussions have been ongoing, we had a meeting this afternoon. I'm sensing a favorable environment like we haven't seen before, but I don't want to be, I don't want to be too certain of myself, but I think we're cautiously optimistic, and things are still moving, I think rather rapidly in the right direction, so hope to have more information for you at the executive session.
When is that, not tonight, right?
No, it won't be tonight, no. They still have to have a meeting, because we gave them the information that you gave to us to convey, we conveyed that in the last 10 days, and again this afternoon, so we're hoping for some, some, something to report back in a couple of weeks. Let's see here, also, I was going to ask Mr. Cockle if he could give us a quick update on the, some of you received a memo about a sign, some sign code work that we had in our schedule. We've had one or two other things that have come up that were sort of unexpected in the planning department, that they've been working on and are now being resolved, but I did want to give him an opportunity to provide you an update. want to give him an opportunity to provide you an update on that.
Thank you. At our goal-setting retreat earlier this year, we had a discussion about the sign code and where we were at in that process, and we walked through that. We imagine this probably will be about a 12-month process, that we were looking at trying to get the RFP done within the first two months of 2013, then letting that out and getting the consult on board to begin that process, and that we have fully intended to do that and accomplish that goal. So if there's any questions about how we're proceeding with that, you know, we are trying to accommodate that while we are still have three staff members. One of each has been given very large projects, including the transportation system plan, the south end concept plan, and Blue Heron. So we are trying to work within the capacity and the staff resources that we have available.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you. Also, Chief Conroy's got an update on the OCPD re-accreditation that's happening this week, and they've been up to their eyeballs in reviewing policies and other fun stuff at the police department.
This is actually our third re-accreditation. We originally became the first law enforcement agency in Clackamas County, it become accredited in 2004. And part of that process is you undergo a re-accreditation every three years. So this is our third time going through it. It will be over with tomorrow. Accreditation basically is slightly over 100 different professional standards the department has to meet. Each one of those standards might have four or five or 10 or 15 sub-standards that we have to meet. So it's been pretty interesting around the department lately trying to get ready for this, but hopefully tomorrow we'll have some good news and be finished with the process, so.
Good.
Also, someone on the Commission, and I don't remember who, asked me what the deadline was for submitting letters for the voters pamphlet in support or not of the water issue that would be coming up. And that deadline, for all of you to know, and the community for that matter, is March 25th. So that's the deadline for submitting materials for or against the ballot measure. March 25th. Also, I have some really positive news. I'm going to pass out for you color copies of the State Oregon Main Street report that just came out today. There's one in there for each of you and maybe an extra one. But what's remarkable about the report is Oregon City, and this is out of all the cities in the state that participate in this program, Oregon City is prominently mentioned or featured in eight of the 17 pages of the report.
That's great.
So that's pretty.
Prominently and positively?
Yes.
Okay.
Eight, eight out of 17 pages of this report feature Oregon City. And their Main Street accreditation, of course, the features, I guess if you will, continue, start right here on the front page, because you can see the Oregon City string band right there on the sidewalk.
Yes.
And that's the first reference. And then there's some right there under Sherri Stewart, the coordinator for the state's program. And the last paragraph of her introduction, there's a whole paragraph there about Oregon City. And then there's another mention of our program on the next page, under the National Main Street Accreditation Program. We're, along with Menville, Corvallis, and Albany, we're mentioned there.
Look at Main Street go.
So it's, and then we have a really nice feature column in the middle of page eight.
Unfortunately, it has a picture of what Main Street used to look like with the bulb outs. That's not, that's a little bit.
Historic photo, I suppose.
Yeah. There you go. I love it.
That picture is what we tore out.
Can't know where you're going unless you know where you've been, right? And then it mentions the outstanding partnership with Rotary back on page 15, right there at the beginning, and it has a picture of our artwork downtown with the Rotary Club. And then Supergenius and Funnel Box Productions in Oregon City were noted as the best success story, and that's on page 16. And then Lloyd Purdy as Main Street Manager of the Year is back on page 17. So that's really something.
It's a black and white photograph.
Yeah. And I noticed that Lloyd is on the working end of the shovel there.
Yes, I see that.
On the sidewalk. So anyway, this is really something your community should be proud of. I mean, I've been in city management a long time, and not, any of the cities I've ever been in have we had some program, a Main Street program. All of them have had Main Street programs, by the way, but none of them have gotten this kind of recognition. So it's, it's really remarkable and something for you and the community and Main Street to be proud of. Let's see here. Somebody got my folder. I gave away something that I shouldn't have.
Oh, there's stuff in there?
Can I have one of those? Today at Rotary, they had this very moving and very remarkable program featured. If any of you know disabled folks, adults of any age, virtually any disability, I just wanted to mention that this Sycamore Lane Therapeutic Writing Center is now, is in its third year here in Clackamas County. And they did a presentation today at Rotary, and it was one of the most moving things I'd ever seen. And so I just encourage you to get the word out about this. They have now 40-some different people each week that are participating in the program. It's a nonprofit. It just does amazing things to help, help people that are in need, and I wanted the Commission and the community to be aware of that.
Thank you.
And then we have an update on Ermertinger, and I hate to blindside Commissioner Smith with this, but he.
More money?
He brought to us this idea that some students had contacted you about this, and we got their proposal back today. And I know you were in school all day and probably didn't have a chance to see it. But Mr. Archer and Denise Kai and I have all reviewed the proposal. And essentially, to break it down for you, because it's about three or four pages of typed text, but essentially what the students are wanting to do is to help close the funding gap for Ermertinger by working with the city of Portland. And they've got the time and the energy, and they're students, and they want to do this. They want to make contact with Mayor Hale's office and some of the administrators there. And we know that none of us really have time to do that all the time. And so they're kind of charged up about this, and we'd like to move forward and have them be our partners.
Where are the students from?
Pardon me?
Western, I think.
Lamont.
Right.
And they're law students.
Oh, I'm thinking.
University.
No, no.
They're law students.
Was it a farmer high?
Yeah, they're law students. Everyone loves them. And so we're really excited about having.
They're not lawyers yet, they're law students.
Right.
That's why they're so warmly received.
We are really looking forward to having them help carry the ball over the finish line to Ermertinger because we're so close. We're so close to getting this done. And they have this new kind of enthusiasm from people, and they have fresh eyes that are looking at the project. And I also think they have access to other interest groups in the state that are outside of our city that are really passionate about trying to save Ermertinger House. So this is good, good stuff, and the kind of free labor every city wants. And I'm just really enthused. Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing them to us. And unless any of you have objections, we're going to go ahead and work with these folks.
You better not.
Does anybody have any objections?
No.
That's the answer we were hoping for. And then, last but not least, and this is kind of keeping with Blue Heron, but Commissioner Roth was at an event in Beaverton about a week ago, and Mr. Conklin and the trustee worked together to get some people from EPA on the site, on the Blue Heron site, for a quick tour. And it was a pretty quick tour. We only had about an hour. And we had, we had perfect weather, though. I mean, it was just beautiful, and the flows were extensive, and I think the two gentlemen that accompanied us were very impressed. And since that time, Metro Commissioner Collette has let us know that she's going to be in Washington on March 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th. And I would like to send somebody from our staff who's knowledgeable about the site, along with Commissioner Roth, to both go there and make a presentation on behalf of the city. Now, the presentation is going to have two components, really, I think. Because some of this will be presented to EPA, we're going to have some technical questions that a staff member is going to be best situated to answer, but we're also going to have political questions because I think they're going to make the most of their time that they're there in trying to hit all cylinders, if you will. And I know Commissioner Roth has already been trying to tie into setting up some meetings, and we've been referenced to some schedulers, and I've been talking to Kurt Schrader's office today to make sure that we don't, to make sure that we make the most of the opportunity and apply for grants where we're supposed to, but also do this lobbying where it's effective as well. And so I want, I want to make sure and run that by the Commission, because you do have a policy that you adopted last year, that when you reimburse commissioners for travel, you need to know in advance. So I'm checking again with you to see if there are any objections. I think this is a great opportunity for us.
Can I rephrase something you said?
Sure.
Lobbying is no longer a PC term, it's government relations now.
Thank you very much. Sounds better, I like it. More syllables, got to be better, right?
And therefore you don't meet in lobbies, you meet in.
That's right, we meet in offices.
In offices, okay.
Yeah, they meet in offices. So we're really looking forward to this. I mean, our staff's going to have to put, do some work on a presentation, and we're really waiting to see whether we're going to have a request for funds, because as you know, we have a $10 million match with the state. We don't have $10 million laying around, so that's an opportunity to ask for something. But we're not sure if the timing is right for that, and that's why we're trying to work through the Congressman's staff to make sure that we frame the presentation in the right way. Is it, is it to request money, or is it to just inform people at the ground level? We've done a lot of that informational stuff already, so I'm sensing that there's new momentum for that site and a lot of interest that is growing rapidly. So I think this is a great time, the time is excellent, and the opportunity's good. And I want to thank Commissioner Roth in advance, and as well as our staff, for working on that. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Do we need to get the approval?
They're just, if there's no one that objects, then that's a consensus. So this isn't an agenda item tonight. Everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, makes it my turn. The Metro Regional Government will be putting on a ballot a request for a levy for products maintenance. This has been something that's been discussed at our regional mayor's meeting, we meet, well, we meet when we have agenda items, but it's almost every month, Twelton, the city of Twelton hosts it. And the major concern we had was really, it wasn't, this wasn't discussed with us, and of course, levies are one of those things that are impacted by compression. The amount is not very high, and I'm personally going to support it, but I was very upset with the process they went through and had written, also Carlotta Colette about the process. But we do, I mean, it's really important to us because we have two major open space areas. They're talking about maintenance for their open space procurements. We have two major open space procurements, and that is, of course, the New Canyon area and also the Kanema area as well. But this is one thing that will be seen coming up in the ballot. The, related to the, to the New Oak Creek Canyon, I think, as you all know, we have city-owned property that abudsthat, these are city-owned properties that were donated to us by developers, lands that they could not develop, and therefore they really didn't want to deal with them. But I, we've entered some discussions with Metro as to whether they wanted to include those into their, into their metro open space areas, and that'll be a discussion that's probably going to be occurring this summer. But it's just areas that we cannot use recreationally because they're too steep. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the State of the City is Friday, the Chamber's hosting it. It's at the Pacific Grand Ballroom, which is in the Oaks Building. And I think all the commissioners are, have been invited to that, but I'm still diligently trying to help put together some good slide presentations, so we'll see how it goes. Anybody else? Well, something else I'm going to mention, I anticipated that there were going to be a couple of people speaking during Citizens Comments, because I was informed they would. One told me directly, and then I got an email. The Father's Heart Ministry, that's on 12th and Washington, as you might expect, we have more homeless people entering this area, we have problems with campsites, and there's also been expressions of concern about behavior of some of the people that are coming through. I haven't had any problems, I'm about, I'm just lower block away from them, but the point is, they, there have been problems of apparently rifling to the recycling cans and then leaving the stuff that they don't want on the ground. That doesn't seem to happen to me, but that's probably because I'm on 12th Street and a little bit more visible. I've talked to the chief, he's indicated where some of the problem campsites are and so forth, and I'll be accompanying a police officer to talk to the people that manage the facility. But I'm personally gratified that we do have such a facility that serves, that serves the homeless. The difficulty is, of course, it's not, they don't offer shelter except when the temperature gets down to freezing. They just don't have that size of a facility to do so, which results in people coming here, and some of them are remaining here. And their behavior and so forth is an issue. But I'll be talking to the chief about that, and we'll, I've talked to, on two occasions talked to the managers of the site, and we had, actually, we had Terry Gant spoke to us here about their ministry a couple of months ago. So that's another issue that's come up. And you have commissioners, my president, oh, Commission President, you get the second?
I get the second, okay.
Well, third, actually.
I wanted to talk a little bit about the Beaverton Roundtable that I attended last week. It was just an amazing forum. I hope that someday we can have something like that here in Oregon City. They had one of the keynote speakers, Sylvia Hayes, the governor's wife, Matthew Stanislawz, who's the deputy director of EPA, Jay Williams, who's the deputy director of the Intergovernmental Affairs and Public Strategies from the White House, both those gentlemen from the White House. It was just a huge array of really wonderful people to get to meet and listen to economic strategies. And one of the things that Sylvia brought up was not thinking of ourselves as being in economic recovery at this point, but being in a rediscovery process. Maybe we don't need to be recovering to the point we were before, maybe we need to be rediscovering new ways of being, of growing. And she really recommended that that's a thought process we put into our minds rather than thinking of recovery. Some, you know, looking at some of the constraints that Beaverton has, they have 123-acre site within the city limits that's developable, and everything else is under five acres. So when I looked at those statistics compared to what we've got, we've got a gem compared to what they're dealing with, and many, many of theirs are brownfields. So they're dealing with some really big problems over there, and yet they're facing them head-on and bringing, bringing forth roundtables like this that was very interesting to see some of the economic incentives they're offering to businesses to come in, how they're using those things. It was just a really great forum, and I, if it ever comes up again, I'd really invite everyone to attend. So that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Just a couple announcements, one of which is, if you saw the Oregon City News, there's the art club at the high schools showing artwork at Big Dog Coffee, and that goes through the end of the month. But they've, one of the other art teachers is the advisor of the art club at the high school and has made some, he has made some partnerships, which I think will involve more artwork being out in the community, which is great. So you have till the end of the month for that. The high school's also putting on their play coming up, the February 28th, then March 1st, 2nd, 7th, 8th, and 9th. And that is Time Flies, which is a collection of short comedies by David Ives, directed and designed and acted out by the Oregon City High School advanced drama students, one of which is our public work director's daughter. And so that'll be good. It's at 7:30 all of those nights, $8, and that's in the Black Box Theater at the high school, which is our small venue. So in, in terms of the Black Box Theater, which seats about 115, so a lot of people don't even know that it exists, the high school has a large auditorium, and then separate from that, a classroom space that is also a theater space. And it's usually. from that, a classroom space that is also a theater space, and it's usually well-attended. The student-directed plays are well-attended. So if you go, you know, you're probably going to get in pretty reasonably if you, if you get there early on the first weekend. If you get there on the second weekend, you may not get to see the show. So go early, because we can only, we can only seat so many people. And the last thing I wanted to mention is the Second Annual Oregon Ghost Conference, which will be held at the Pioneer Center, March 8th through the 10th, because this is a creepy place that we live in.
Some people say that.
That's all I have.
We've got a request, maybe should verbalize it.
Well, I was just thinking, because of being in Washington the first week of March, and this, our, no, no, the RFP, the collaboration agreement, do we?
I'm trying to think about the time change there. What you guys would want to do that telephonically. We, well, we'd just schedule this for the next one if we don't think it'll work.
Well, that.
You can't keep putting.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we probably need to.
Someone will be here from, from my staff to be able to walk through this. Christina Robinson will try to make sure she gets.
Yeah, that's what I think. So they'll be gone the first week of March, so we'll, we'll have somebody else from your office here. Okay.
Are you had to do some explaining? Tell me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Anything else?
Of course.
Okay.
You've got to raise your hand.
Oh, yes, yes, there, there, I'm on, I'm on there, I'm official now.
Oh, excuse me, I wasn't even looking first. Yeah, I know.
Thursday and Friday, and they also had them Wednesday, Main Street, Oregon City, they took sections of Main Street, or I should say downtown, by streets. So there was, I think there was like 10th to 15th, and they did them in sections, and then they had kind of round tables, where Ethan from Main Street, the marketing and promotions, he met with these groups, and they got to collaborate, come up with ideas, weigh on what they wanted to see for festivals, events, different concerns that they had. If Father's Heart came up for the ones from 10th to 15th, and it was just, it was great to see the business owners down there working together, collaborating, and I'm really happy with how the process is going for citizen participation down there in Main Street. People are really able to have a voice now and participate in all the different aspects of what's going on on Main Street. So they were, they were very good.
Commissioner Smith and I attended South Fork Water Board along with Finance Director Wyatt. Thank you for coming. It was very nice for you to, are you like officially now the budget guy for the Water, South Fork Water Board?
Executive Director John Collins is the budget officer for the board, but I introduce myself as the finance director.
Yes. Okay. So it's good to have you onboard, thank you.
One thing that I forgot to mention, I'll come back to it. Actually, I guess it was Tuesday that, no, Monday, that Commissioner Schrader was given a, Commissioner Schrader, US Representative Schrader was given a tour of some of the businesses downtown, and I accompanied him, and I had an opportunity to go into Supergenius, and it's impressive, and I don't know if anybody, anybody hasn't had the opportunity to go in there and see what they're doing. They got a little promo thing that they showed and the various things they do, and it's extremely impressive. And they employ 25 people, so it's, it's not a, it's not, it's a small business, but it's a, it's a busy one. And also got to go in where they're reworking their, in Busch Furniture for the new wine shop that's going to be coming, and they're doing some great work in there, it's going to be a very impressive one, and they anticipate opening on April 1st, so.
Or will, April 4th, they really?
Well, they might have something promotional.
Maybe.
Okay. Well, with that, any other comments? Is good order? Okay. Close the.